I them three, not me.
I make a motion we adjourn?
All in favor say aye. Done. Uh, approve the agenda as printed.
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
We've moved in second to approve the agenda as printed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Approve the minutes from last meeting.
I read the minutes and I have moved to approve the minutes.
Second?
I'll second that.
Moved in second to approve the minutes from last meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Payroll and bills to be paid. Chris, don't fall off your chair. Don't faint.
You got them done?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you Steve.
Uh, bills to be paid. Francis?
Francis, did you see that?
Yeah, I seen this one here.
Yeah, okay.
So this is when we have to, uh...
That's for the shelter house.
Okay.
So that gets paid through the park account. That came in.
Well, Lake Hardware's got a bill for, uh, fifteen hundred dollars against the...
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand, excuse, fifteen hundred would be better, but...
Yeah.
For the shelter house.
Give him fifteen hundred, Steve.
Yeah, yeah.
What's that? Can you tell them what's that include Francis?
All it says is bills fifteen hundred dollars against the shelter house, so...
What they did was they bid, they bid that they would do the shelter house.
I know, with the furnace and all that kinda stuff, yeah.
For just the material and none of their labor, so...
Correct.
And it was, uh, twenty-five or twenty-six thousand.
Yeah, I remember that, yeah.
So they just said, "We wanna do this against our..."
Well, they probably got the furnaces already installed and they probably...
They did.
Yeah, and they probably want some money out of it.
They got the furnaces and most of the ductwork in, so...
Okay.
Some stove, that's not bad.
Huh?
Some stove, that's not bad. That's no problem there.
Okay. Okay, thank you Rick. So we wanna add that in Francis, right?
Yeah.
Fifteen thousand?
Yes, fifteen thousand.
Even?
Yes.
Yeah.
And there's also a, uh, new opportunities. We haven't put anything, a number down there, but last year we gave them a five hundred dollars, um...
Donation.
Yeah. So we just gotta, you know, if we wanna do that again this year, you know, they do quite a bit to help.
Is that the one in SAC?
No, it's one in Carol.
It's in Carroll, but then, you know, the money comes back into Wall Lake.
Yep, yep.
These are what they give you for a song and dance anyway.
I think, yeah, I think, uh, I think it's a good program. I think that, that part of the program, I think we can kinda... I guess we can guarantee that it comes back to Wall Lake, but I think we can, I think most of who does say that it, uh, pretty well does.
Motion to approve the bills with the additions please? Or is there any more, excuse me, is there any more discussion?
This one has, uh, the IA MU CPS ten-five and then George thirty-nine sixty. Is that what it costs us to put that stuff in there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, uh, there was, there was about, uh, probably roughly four thousand dollars in material, so if you added the whole thing together, it was about eighteen thousand dollars to get that, uh, gas line put in out there, which is still half of what, uh, the other company bid it for, so...
Yeah.
I mean, it's quite a bit of money, but I thought it was real. And we're gonna use TIF money to pay for all of that. So we need to approve that bill, but it's not gonna come out of our account. It's gonna come out of our TIF account, so...
And not to, not to veer off track, but kudos to Rick. I stopped out, remember what day it was? It was Tuesday. Cause I called you. The cleaning people were out there and they swore they could smell a gas leak. Well, I've been out in the chemicals so long that I can't smell. I call Rick. Rick says, "I'm about twenty minutes out." He said, "I'll stop and I'll talk to him," what have you. Rick did find a gas leak. There was a, we didn't have to shut the, the, the natural gas off or nothing. He'd come out the next morning. It was, uh, something in the threads you said, or it wasn't fitting tight, or... Yep, so, thank you to Rick and, and my cleaning people that they found it, what have you. So, thank you very much Rick, appreciate it, so... We got that fixed and like, Rob asked me, things seem to be very, running very well. It's a warmer heat out there, I can tell it. When you first walk out in there, you can just, you can, you can tell it's, it's a warmer heat than the electric heat. It's just, it's a, it's a better heat. There's no doubt in my mind. Whether there's a cost savings yet, do you have yet? Rob will let you know as soon as we get a couple months down the line.
If they did, we would like to too, too, is shift the...
Electric on.
Electric off and the, maybe gas on, you know.
We'll, we'll see that on the next bill, cause it was kinda right in the middle of December, or maybe even later in December when we started that up, so... We'll see that on this next, uh, on this January bill, so...
Okay, not to get sidetracked, but any more discussion on the bills to be paid?
So our final number would be adding those two back in would be, uh, one-four-seven-one-six-six-point-five-four.
I move we pay the bills with those additions.
Did you get that Chris?
Second that.
We've moved in seconded to approve the bills with the two additions that Franny mentioned. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Old Business CDVG project update. Chris, anything to add?
Yeah, not necessarily, other than, uh, King Construction's gonna pig the line now. Uh, they, they passed two of the water tests. The third one didn't pass, so then now they're gonna shove the pig down through it. And Rick, if I say something out of school, make sure you let me know, but they're gonna, they're gonna pig it, uh, clean the line out as good as they can. Um, they'll shock it again with chlorine and then they'll, uh, take the three, they, they have to go back and take three tests again now, so... And, and nothing really can be done now on the project until that line is, is done.
Approved.
Because then, then we'll run that line, uh, to the water treatment plant, shut down the existing pump house, so we can do the, uh...
Transformation there.
Do the pipe work in there that needs to be done, so, uh...
Anything to add Rick?
When do they think they were gonna do that, or?
Well, they're hoping they get at it pretty quick. Like you said, Dave was gone. I think it was all last week, uh, maybe part of the week before that fishing, and, uh, so...
They left on Friday, Thursday night.
Was it last Thursday night?
They were gonna try to do it Thursday, but it was so cold that they decided...
Yeah.
How often can they run them tests in? Once a week? Once every three days?
Well, once they start them, they gotta do them every day.
Every day?
Yeah.
So once we get three tests that go three in a row that are good, we're good to go?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
That's part of the reason why that hydrant got put in down there too, cause what we do is flush it backwards, cause otherwise you'd be pushing that water into our line that we're using now, which wouldn't be good.
Then we're defeating our cause.
And it's really, I think it's pretty clear, that the DNR calls for zero, not one or two or whatever, but it comes back with any and they, it fails.
Okay.
Begin with a new one.
Yes, that's pretty strange.
Any other questions for Rick? Chris?
Yeah, I guess the sooner they can do it, the better. Just been sitting on this project for...
I know.
Five years, we don't do it for six.
That's what I said to Joe Roushberg today. Can we get it done, you know, so...
You're right Franny, cause I remember when I first took office here as mayor, that we passed that project to go through. And I'm in my fifth year of his term now, so you're exactly right. I know exactly where you're at.
And I, I'll make a point too, to call Dave this week, just to see where we're at.
I don't think they were coming back till tomorrow. I'm not real sure on it, but...
Oh yeah?
Sean just, I talked to Sean Blaine, too.
Oh, did they all go up?
All went to Minnesota.
Oh yeah.
Blake usually does it for him. He got married in Mexico or someplace. I don't know where he went, sure. Have they been down there?
So it got cold and they said, "The hell with it" and left, huh?
One ice fishing.
Any more discussion? Questions? Concerns? If not, we're gonna move on. Chris, you can help us out with this next one. Discuss, approve, keep Iowa beautiful representative. I think we got a good one, myself.
Yeah, we finally, uh...
You've talked to her, then I take it?
Finally, yes.
Okay.
Finally got ahold of Maxine. Uh, she had a lot of questions. Um, she came in and talked to Chloe Wallace. And, uh, Maxine Bateen is going to be our representative, uh, for the Keep Iowa Beautiful.
She'll be given...
Yep, and now, they're gonna, they're gonna start meetings kinda right away. Chloe's, Chloe's due to have a baby sometime in February, and so she wants to have a meeting right away and, uh...
Get this thing off the ground.
Get it going, right, so...
So, do we need to pay our dues or whatever we call it?
No.
Okay.
They'll let us know when we need to get that done. Uh, the first thing that they're gonna do is they're gonna all meet and, you know, they're gonna meet with the Keep Iowa Beautiful director, uh, Jerry Schneff, I think his name is. I, I don't know, I'm sure I didn't say that quite right, but...
They haven't hired anybody yet as far as...
No, that's the, that's the first thing that they're gonna do.
That's exactly what I thought they were gonna do.
That's what they're gonna do. Jerry and the, uh, ten-person board is gonna sit down and that'll be their first project.
So all their towns have got, had filled their positions too then?
I think there was one, Litten maybe hadn't yet, cause they hadn't had a council meeting. I think their council meeting is tonight.
Who's like you, do you know?
Uh, John.
Wes Ritter?
Yes. Um, yes. It, it was kinda half and half. Some cities had council members or mayors, elected officials, and half didn't.
I'm sure Nemo filled theirs right away.
I don't even know who's theirs was, honestly.
Who's that?
Uh, can't remember that either.
Elected official or?
Yes, I remember. Oh, uh, I think so. I think it was a councilman.
So it'll be, uh, either Gary or, uh, that other one.
We're getting off track here now. Let's go.
Okay, yep, 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 you're right, you're right, you're right. Uh, Chris, let's move into the budget.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. We gotta approve Maxine.
Oh, do we?
I make a motion we approve Maxine Bateen for the Keep Iowa Beautiful representative.
For Walt, City of Wall Lake.
Which was City of Wall Lake.
Second that.
We've moved in seconded to accept Maxine Bateen as the city representative for Wall Lake, uh, to Keep Iowa Beautiful. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion passed. Sixteen budget, Chris, you're up.
Yeah, uh, I don't, yeah, I don't even have anything in here for you guys to look at. Um, I have started it a little bit and, and actually have had Lynn working on it too a little bit, you know, when, when we gave her that raise and we talked a little bit about her having some more duties to go along with that. One of those is, uh, I'm gonna try to work her into doing a little bit more with the budget. And so she's been working on that a little bit. I've been working on it, but we don't have anything, you know, finalized. The, the reason why I wanted this on here is because I wanna talk to you guys a little bit about thinking about some things that we're gonna need, you know? We've, we've been working on getting a trencher for the last, I don't know, eight or nine months, you know, ever since way before we hired Myron, and so...
Get longer now.
Rick and Myron went and looked at one the other day. Think it's a pretty decent machine, but may have to put some money into it, so... Uh, Myron called a guy today who works for a company called Vermeer, and, uh, they're, sounds like they're getting a bunch of machines in from, um...
Mid-American.
Mid-American, thanks Rick. Uh, those may be something that we wanna look at. Uh, so that, that type of thing, you know, we'll wanna... And that, that, we may get that before this next budget comes out, you know? I, I don't know what we're gonna do there. Um, but we need to be thinking about mainly projects, you know, not necessarily, uh, equipment, but we need to be thinking about projects that we wanna do or that may come up. Uh, one of them is, sometimes we can't think about these things. It's kinda difficult to do. Uh, but one of them is this, uh, sewer, sewer deal that we've been talking about in the last couple of meetings.
Lift station.
Right, the lift station. Uh, we, we'll talk to you a little bit more about that at the end of the meeting tonight, but there may be some different opportunities there. Um, so if there's any other projects that you guys can think of that we, that we need to do or that we may wanna do, uh, those are, those are the kinda things that we need to have in the budget, so...
How soon do you have to have that Chris?
Well, the, the budget's due March fifteenth and we always, we'll have, we'll have a budget, a kind of a first draft budget for you to look at at the next meeting.
Okay.
Because we have to put it through a council meeting and, you know, you guys need some time certainly to look at it.
Go through it.
Uh, so then we have to publish it in the paper and then we have to get it to the state, which doesn't take very long at all, so... We could, we could do everything. Uh, I think our, our first meeting in March is March ninth, so we could, uh, we'd actually approve it on March ninth and we could have it in the paper on March thirteenth, I think it would be.
Is that electronic, transported?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, uh, and then we could get it, get it to where we need to get it to pretty easy by then. But I don't, I don't wanna wait till that. I don't wanna wait till March ninth, you know, because if something...
Pushing this right to the deadline.
Well, if something happens, if we wanna do something different, you know, I hate to push that all the way to the end, end of the time, so we'll have something for you to look at at the next meeting.
Well, if you guys need to, drive around town, see what you think you need, talk to Rick, talk to Myron, see if you wanna do what for projects. Maybe you can talk to Daryl Lamok, maybe he's got an idea or two.
I guess we look at the crystal ball, you know, right now, we probably think this electrical project would be pretty good.
Project.
Yeah.
I think that's one of, I think that's one of the main things, and I think we need to really focus on that Franny, and, and honestly, I can't think of anything else that we really need to do either.
I'm sure unfortunately, there's gonna be things that come up that are way beyond our control, so...
And, yeah, that's where, it would be nice if we could get to the point where we can plan to do the kinda things that we're, that we've been talking about in the last couple of meetings. Plan to put two pumps in instead of, "Oh shit, we gotta put two pumps in," you know? Uh, but that'll take a little while, so...
Our ten-year plan, let's start on that.
There we go.
Life won't work either.
Yeah, well, you're right, you're right.
What'd you say, Rick?
Turn it into twenty-year plan with a ten-year plan.
Okay. If you guys have any questions, concerns, make sure you come down and see Chris, or talk to Rick on the budget. Uh, you can talk to, like I say, Myron, talk to Daryl Lamok, see what their ideas are. If we can get everybody involved and we can communicate, communicate between everybody, I think we'll be better off, so...
One thing I do, one, one other thing I wanna say too though is, we gotta remember that when we say budget, you know, when, when people say, "Give me a budget to work with", you can't just put in there whatever you wanna put in there.
Correct.
I mean, we still gotta work within that.
We only got, we only got so many numbers coming in.
We still gotta work within the confines of our, uh, confines of our revenue, so...
Gotta be real, realistic.
Right, we've gotta be realistic and, and some of the things we aren't probably gonna be able to do, but, uh, I guess I just wanted to say that, so...
Okay, shall we move on to the clerk's report?
I think we should. I'm, I'm excited for it. I know everybody else is. Uh, that first page there, page five, um, you can see how we got from the negative five thousand, and I think everybody remembers that was our bank balance at the end of the month, last month. It was Gary made us think about that, and then we got to fifty-six thousand this month. Um, if you look at, uh, about two-thirds of the way down, it says voided check six-oh-five-eighty. Uh, we had a clerk of court check for three hundred and seventy dollars that we, uh... That, that's a way that we can get money back from people who owe us money, is, is taking the small claims, and so this is how we do it. We ended up doing it a different way, and so, uh, they sent the check back and, uh, so we voided that. We didn't, we didn't actually have to pay them. And then the AFLAC check, the two-thirty-five-eighty, that was a duplicate check, uh, from maybe, I don't know, October. Uh, and I, I'm not sure what happened there, but we had a duplicate check, and so that's something that we didn't have to pay either, so...
Questions on that sheet?
Yeah, there's really nothing else there, uh...
Concerns? Questions? If not, move on Chris.
Uh, that next page there, the balance sheet, let's look at, um, the wellness center, kinda right there in the middle, it's eleven forty-four. It's got ninety-three-hundred-and-thirty dollars in there. You know, we usually try to keep about five thousand dollars in there. Um, unless we're gonna purchase something, we really, I mean, there's, there's no expenses. The city pays for the electric and all that kinda stuff, so, uh... I don't know if you guys wanna transfer that money somewhere, if you, if you wanna do something with it, if you wanna, uh, buy something with it or, or whatever.
You said, are we looking at equipment Rob, or?
No, I don't think so.
I don't think we are either. Uh, you know, we just got some treadmills, uh, three pretty new treadmills, not even a year ago, and so... Everything in there's in pretty good shape right now, um...
If Ron would just leave that one machine home, we'd be alright.
Ron's breaking stuff.
It's, it's been alright since.
At least you're in there usually.
I think if we, uh, transfer forty-three-thirty, or just drop it down to five thousand, put it in the community center main savings, because eleven forty-six there, the community center main savings, we are going to have a five thousand dollar withdraw out of there.
Right.
Because of the furniture for the shelter house.
I think, I think that's a good idea, honestly.
And then, uh, also, well, we, you know, they have, I think, already booked a place or a, a time to do a hypnotist upstairs.
It's February...
February twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh.
Tickets are, tickets are ten dollars.
Yep.
That's...
And usually the tickets pretty much just cover the hypnotist, so the proceeds from the bar are what the community center will make off of it to try to recover the five thousand dollars too, which is our, part of our agreement. They were very happy with what we did there, so...
Are they gonna have that casino?
No.
No. That's one thing that our, uh...
That, we can't do that because of legality reasons.
Our attorney has asked us not to do that that way.
Some of us, some legality reasons that we can't do that.
We'd be, casinos out of something, or?
No, we're not doing it correctly. You're, you're actually supposed to earn the money and then spend it, rather than doing the tickets like we were.
Oh, I see.
Uh, you have to earn the money and then you have to bid on things, you know, and it's...
They could screw anything, I'm guaranteeing.
Oh yeah.
Okay.
Our, our attorney also asked us not to, uh, have a function where we had unlimited drinking, which is probably the wisest thing not to do, too.
Yeah. Okay.
So do, so do we want to...
Make a motion?
Yeah, let's do that. Thanks Steve.
I would make a motion that we transfer...
Down to five thousand.
Yeah, down to five thousand in the...
Wellness center.
Wellness center checking and put it in the community center main savings, eleven forty-six.
Yeah, cause there's actually almost ten thousand dollars in there now, so...
Second?
I'd second that.
Moved in seconded to move, uh, X amount of dollars down to five thousand dollars in the wellness center checking and put it in the, uh, community center fund? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? So moved.
Okay.
Uh, nothing else in that page, is there?
No, not, not really, um...
That park renovation fund, that's still for us to, uh, for the shelter house, isn't it?
Yeah, and you can see that, that one got hit pretty good in the last month.
Yeah.
But, you know, there's been quite a bit that's gone on there too, so...
Had fifteen to come out of there too, or?
Yes. What's that?
Fifteen thousand.
Yeah.
Yes. Right, that we approved and that, right, you're right, yep. Yeah, so, um...
We'll wanna discuss, do we have, and we can bring this up at a later time, but do we have, uh, camera's gonna go up on that place too?
Yes.
Okay. I thought we approved that. I wasn't sure, but I thought we did.
Definitely well lit up.
Oh yeah. You can see that basically.
My wife says, "You're gonna tell me them lights are gonna shine through our living room all night?" I said, "Yep, there they are." Okay.
Plant a tree or something, um...
Let's move on to the next page, balance sheet.
Let's go down to page eight Steve.
Okay.
It's fine with me. Our revenues. You can see that we got about sixty-two hundred dollars in park donations last month. Um, community center rent was pretty good last month, about three thousand dollars.
I should say also, there, I know Don Potoff and I have talked, and there's two people we wanna hit yet for donations for the shelter house that we have not hit. I'm not gonna say the two names yet, but there is two names that we need to hit yet that have not donated. So, sorry about that. Didn't mean to interrupt you, but...
No, that's fine. Uh... Yeah, I mean, nothing really out of the ordinary on there. We got, we did get some, uh, general property taxes in, which we generally get a li, a few of those in each month, but never this amount, so... People have...
That's just cause I paid mine for the year.
Yeah.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you, citizen.
So, let's just go down to the next page. And there's really very little on there. You can see we've got some snow removal going on, obviously, some salaries in there.
Well, Chris, I was gonna ask you, any mailboxes hit?
I got one today.
Did ya?
Kinda very hard.
Huh?
First pitch.
Oh no, of all of them!
I would make it safe.
That one I wouldn't give a shit about.
Don't worry about that.
I'm not just giving you shit. I thought there was none.
That's the first punch apart, that ain't all.
So we'll go to page ten there, and, um, you can see the, uh, up at the top there, the parks, parks expenses. We spent fifty, about fifty thousand dollars in last month and, uh, the renovation there.
What page you on Chris?
Uh, page, page ten. And then down from there, you can see the negative fifteen-seventeen and, uh, telephone. Um, and when we, when we paid that bill, we just, uh, that was a couple of bills to Corn Belt, and that was just a miss type of a number, and so it went into our, uh, pool account instead of our general city account, so I transferred that over this month back to that other account, and you'll be able to see that when we get down to it. And then you got your community center and your... If you go down to page eleven and look at city hall, general building expense, you can see the telephone was fifteen-hundred-and-forty-seven, so that was that whole transfer plus a, plus a little bit more there, so... That's where that should've been.
Don't hesitate to stop Chris, if you got any questions, please.
Right. Um, nothing else on that page.
Road use, twelve?
Yeah, go to road use and, um... Nothing really out of the ordinary there. I probably will though, uh, probably will move some of those, um, snow removal salaries over to here. I didn't, I didn't see that we have a snow removal, uh, line, line under here, under expenditures. So I'll probably move those salaries over to there. Uh, what that does is it just, it just helps us not spend as much money out of our general fund, and it makes our general fund look a little bit better.
And plus the fact we've got that account there anyway, so...
And, and that money now comes from the state. It comes directly into our road use fund, so that money's just sitting there and until, until we have a project or something to spend it on.
So use it on snow removal.
Yeah, we, so, that's what we used to do. It used to go into the general fund and we'd just use it for whatever and...
Any repairs to the snow plows or stuff like that that will come out of that account also?
Um, yeah, it'll probably go into the snow removal account first.
Okay.
Just so, the reason we do that is so that we can see what we actually spend on snow removal.
That's what I was asking, that, that...
And then, and then we'll move it over, cause that's a, that's a, a budget item that we have to budget for, and so...
I know, I know. Uh, cause we never budget down for that, because we always, we expect the worst. We always come out good on that account, because we haven't had a whole lot of snow removals.
We have.
Yeah, knock, yeah, knock on, yeah, exactly, knock on wood.
It can't, it can't turn bad though, and...
I couldn't find my mailbox in January.
Okay, moving on.
We'll take that out of there for ya.
Tax, uh, TIF.
Yeah, TIF, so it, in next, in the next one of these that you see, you'll see some, uh, some expenses for the gas that come out of there, and it'll be... Oh, you know, I don't know how much it'll be, but it'll be twenty thousand, eighteen thousand bucks just, just about, so... And that's what we put in our plan. It was up to twenty thousand dollars we had in our plan to, to get that line put in there, so... That should be, that should be perfectly fine with everybody.
Okay.
Really nothing out of the ordinary.
Debt service fund is, should be nothing.
No, we did, we did get a little bit of debt service money in this month and generally don't, uh... So yeah, that, that one will just continue to grow and we'll pay our, uh, pay our interest with that fund and we'll continue on like that from now on. We will at the end of the year, when we, when we have to pay our, uh, principal, we will transfer money out of our bond sinking fund into our debt service fund and pay it out of there, just to make the, uh, the auditors happy.
That's what they always request anyway, so...
Yeah, yeah, so we're gonna do that to make them happy.
Page fifteen.
Not too big of a deal, but, uh... Yeah, and you, you can see our, uh, electric fund and our natural gas funds both jumped tremendously last month. Um, and I mentioned that the month before, that our natural gas fund, we did, we missed a payment in there, and so, uh, so that was gonna jump up quite a bit. And our electric fund, that, uh, we only had, we only had one bill in the month last month, and the month before that we had three, so... Uh, just timing of the bill, bills that come in. One thing I do wanna point out is the garbage, you know, that's all the way up to thirty-four-hundred-and-eighty-three, but we got our quarterly assessment again, and so...
It's gonna come in.
It's still, you know, if we get our January revenues in there, we may...
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be just about, we'll be just about even. We'll, we'll be damn near even, so... I, I think we're gonna be pretty close to even at the end of the year. I really hope we are anyway.
We'll be able to buy a new truck.
So, yeah, careful now.
Yeah.
Automatic?
Sure.
Careful.
Hi there Matty.
Don't say that to Darryl. Darryl kinda likes this truck.
No, he don't.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Um, so, next page, page sixteen, uh... Uh, so, next page, page sixteen, uh. Can see our electric revenues, generally, they're around, you know, about sixty thousand in this month, they were eighty four, so you can tell it was pretty chilly and.
Whole month.
Yeah, uh, part of that came from November too, so, and our expenses were not very high.
But that's down.
What's that?
Well, I got rid of my electric furnace and CPS got rid of their electric furnace.
Yeah, that, you won't see that though till this month.
I know.
Yeah, so, that'll, that'll be interesting to see, though. I mean, obviously, it really will be interesting to see, and one, one other thing about that that I wanna mention, uh, I don't wanna talk too long about it, but I wanna mention that we are going to uh, we are gonna vote out at mean, uh, on the twenty second, I believe it is, to uh, gay or nay on this new billing that we're, that we've been talking about, and if, if it goes through, then that will start in March of this year, uh, going forward. So, I thought it was gonna be a whole nother year before it started, but it's actually gonna start in March.
I thought you were right, I thought, yeah.
That'll be a good thing for us. I don't know exactly how much of a good thing, but uh, that'll be a good thing for us, so.
But I, if I remember correctly, Chris, we got a boatload of people that switched over from electric to natural gas this year.
Well, eh, not a boatload, but we, we've got some, some big ones, you being the, the really big one, so that's gonna, that's gonna help us also. Uh, although that won't help us, because this will, that'll start in March and you guys will be done heating by then, so, won't help us too much.
Hmm, April, baby, cause we need to keep her pretty warm yet in March.
Yeah, you don't, you don't use too much, uh, not, nothing like you do in December, January, so.
Okay, continuing on.
Uh, natural gas fund, or look at our revenues there, it was a hundred and sixty thousand, that's, we got two payments from uh WIE there, and uh, so that really made that, that really made that baby jump up quite a bit.
Questions, Council?
So that one is starting to look better again, um.
Oh, water bill looks bad either.
Well, and, you know, the water fund, and that's, that one's gonna be negative until we get done with our project and get through a year. Um, one of the things that we've gotta remember or keep in the back of our head is, is that uh, at the end of this year, we're gonna wanna transfer money out of some account, one of these accounts into our garbage fund to zero that out, to get that down to, and that's about eighty five thousand, we'll get to it in a little bit, but uh.
You said we'd figure that out later, though. That's what you said, we'd figure out which account would be the most prudent to pull it from. And you thought maybe two accounts.
And it doesn't, it doesn't really make any difference at all. I mean, it's all in one pot anyway, so uh, we're gonna be using most of the money that we have in that pot for our electric project, uh.
Okay.
So, uh, we can move on now to.
Sewer?
Yep, sewer. Um, sewer, you know, we had that uh, that uh storm sewer that we, that we did, and that's gonna make this one look bad for a little while yet, but.
Hope I rubbed you, man.
Yeah, but we'll, we'll get through that probably in the next couple of months, and then we'll start.
Once this is behind us, that'll look, make it look better, yeah.
Start gaining on that one again.
Yeah, we will.
Uh, but that, I mean, that pretty much decimated the whole account. That used to be about a twenty five thousand dollar account, and now it's down to fourteen hundred, you can see, but.
Here's the ugly one.
Yeah, and so you look at the, yeah, it's about eighty, eighty two, eighty two thousand, eighty, it'll be eighty five thousand by the end of the year, I think. Uh, so we'll have to figure out where to transfer that from, um. But, like we talked about, we, we got twenty six hundred dollars worth of net income in this month, and if we get two thirds of that, or, you know, eighteen hundred next month, we'll come out even with, uh, with our tipping fee.
Tipping, yeah.
It'll, it'll be close, I think, at the end of the year, so. So there you go.
Yeah, then you get cash deposits and all that kinda stuff.
Yeah, that, that shows you guys every check that we wrote and every, uh, every dollar that we got in.
Motion to approve clerk's report.
I moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve clerk's report. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Okay, let's move on to the employee's handbook.
Okay, uh.
Some personal changes or some revisions you wanna make?
Right.
Chris?
Right, and, um. I don't have both of them in here, but uh, I guess what I can do is go through this one and, and just tell you what it changed from and what it changed to, um.
Page.
Yeah, let me look in here first. So, uh, page thirty eight right there, it says, you can't see really very good at all where I've got it highlighted, but down there at the bottom where it starts, uh.
Nothing in this section?
Yeah, you can kinda see the scribbles there that, nothing in this section will prohibit the city administrator department heads from establishing standard operating procedures or protocol for the day-to-day operation of individual departments, provided the procedures are compatible. That and the next one, if there's a conflict between the policies in this manual, blah, blah, blah. I don't know if we need to have that in there, uh, but I don't know that it's necessarily hurt, hurting anything either. Uh.
Is that something you need to talk to Bush about?
No, I don't think so. I mean, it doesn't really say anything, uh, out of, out of the ordinary. It just, when I read it, it seems like, you know, nothing in this section will prohibit it. Department heads from establishing standard operating procedures. I mean, okay, do we need to have that in there?
Well, the, I, I understand that, but the thing I understand where you're coming from, you're not unionized, right, Rick? So if there was a conflict between the policies in this manual and the collective bargaining agreement?
That's the part that, that's the part there, the, the final paragraph, that I don't, I'm not sure that we need that in there.
Cause you're not union. If you would be union, I could see that being in there, because you'd have a collective bargaining agreement.
So let's, let's do that with that one. I'll, let's do this with that one. I'll talk to Warren about that, tho- that paragraph there. If he says it's okay, we'll just leave it alone. If not, then I'll bring it back to you guys and tell him what he suggests.
And it was either deleted or, yeah, okay, correct. Okay, next one. Is section four, page nine, all vacations not used by city employees will be either forwarded to city council or mayor as see fit. Is that okay? You didn't get all yours used either, did you?
What?
I could use some of it.
What actual?
Carryover?
Forty five.
No, I just giving you shit, Chris. I just giving Rick a hard time. Which is the next one you got to?
I don't know. Oh. Uh. Page three.
Definitions? No.
Yeah. Page forty.
Uh huh.
I have on page, yeah, it's page four, actually, uh, page forty in here, uh, letter B, full or part-time, it says a full position is one in which it is not planned that the incumbent will normally be scheduled for forty hours a week. I think not should be taken out of there. Because a full-time person should be.
Scheduled for forty hours a week.
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah.
And that, and then a part-time position would be one where you may or may not be scheduled for forty hours a week.
Yeah, that's exactly. In fact, ours, I believe Franny, correct me if I'm wrong, a full-time position is, is one which is planned that the incumbent will normally be scheduled for a thirty-two hour per week.
Thirty-two or thirty-eight, somewhere in that.
Isn't it something like that?
Well, they dropped it to thirty-two because of Obamacare.
Yeah.
Is that what it is?
I, I, I went to thirty, I heard.
Well, actually, they're, the Republican Congress right now is gonna put it back up to forty and send it to Obama and see if he'll sign it or not.
Okay, so you want, yeah, I would, I agree with you, Chris, take that not out of there, but I don't know if I'd touch that forty hour.
No, I think we can have that kinda where we want it, can't we?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, next?
It's just that it allows people to call them full-time at thirty-two hours a week.
Oh, yeah, so they do.
Because of the health.
And they can drop them to thirty-two hours a week, you know, and we don't wanna do that to any of our employees. They, you know, a place like Walmart or McDonald's that will just schedule people for thirty-two hours a week and they call them full-time.
That's what they do. That's exactly what they do.
Actually, they go thirty, so they don't have to.
Yeah.
Yep. Put page on now, Chris.
Okay, let's see here. Page, page forty-two. Um. At-will employment. At-will employment is something that this, Iowa is an at-will employment state, which means you can start or stop a job.
And you don't have to tell them why.
As an, as an employee, and the employer has the same ability to do that. Uh, the thi- the thing that I wanna point out here is that it says, uh, only the city council has the right to modify or change this practice, and such action must be done by formal resolution. Is that something that we wanna do? If let's say, uh, let's say, Rick, we, we, all of a sudden, we wanna tell Rick, you know, we're gonna give you a three dollar raise, but you have to give us thirty days before you can just quit. That, that would tell Rick that he is, is not under at-will employment anymore, because he can't just walk off the job and quit. Do we wanna do that by formal resolution, or do we wanna just put it through a council meeting? Or do you guys care?
I think you should leave it alone.
Okay.
My, that, that, that's my feeling. I, Council, that's, that's up to you. Because what I was told is that Iowa is the state at-will employment. So if, if we don't like what Rick's doing, and we take it to a vote, and we can terminate his employment, he's gonna say, well, why'd you terminate me? We don't have to give him any explanation.
You're right. And there's.
He done.
Iowa's not the only state that does that. There's several states that do that.
Right.
But the thing that, I, I don't say we wanna do that. I'm talking about by formal resolution. Do we wanna do it by formal resolution? Or do we wanna just do it by formal roll call vote? Cause you can do either one of them.
Council?
What's the term of the resolution, roll call?
Resolution.
Resolutions, it's gonna be on the books.
It's just, it's just a piece of paper that you have to write up and.
Yep.
And then, instead of, instead of Franny saying, I, I move that we do whatever we're gonna do, and then they go rob seconds it, and then they go around as a second, as a roll call. Franny says, I move to approve resolution number, whatever number it is, and they do it that way, so. Really, I mean, to me, it's not much different, but we can leave it the way it is.
It's, you know, this one I probably, being just, I'm sure it's probably Iowa code, so, I mean, I don't, you don't.
Leave it alone, is what you're saying.
Yeah, I don't come thinking.
That, that's, I, I wholeheartedly.
That's absolutely.
That's why you gotta have some thought behind it.
Yep.
Yeah.
That way you can do a formal roll call vote.
Written then, if you're gonna do something.
Yep, exactly right. Good job, guys, good job. Next one, Chris?
Next one is. Okay.
Page?
Page forty-six. It's called maternity leave. And under letter A, it says, it starts like this, such leave shall be granted for a period of time up to, but not to exceed three months. Then it says, an additional three months of maternity leave without pay shall be granted. Then after that, it says, upon request of the employee accompanied by a doctor's statement, maternity leaves without pay may may be extended for increments of thirty days, not to exceed six months, and in no case shall it get over twelve months. Way too much wording in there.
Yeah.
For me. Now, I went, I went and looked up the pregnancy and all that good kinda stuff and maternity, and what I found is it says, an employer may not have a rule which prohibits an employee from returning to work for a predetermined length of time after childbirth. So I don't think that we can put in there that in no case shall the period of leave exceed twelve months by what this says to me.
I agree, there too many. This, this stipulates too much.
Yeah.
I think stop at the thirty days and be done with it.
I, I agree. It said, well, it says in here, um, must allow up to eight weeks of medic, medically indicated leave. Doesn't say that we have to pay for that. We don't have to pay for that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh.
Council?
And then, one other thing in there too, uh. And I tried to find this in, in this whole thing, but I didn't, I didn't, I'm not sure that I did, but anytime that you say shall, three months of maternity leave without pay shall be granted. That means that you will do it.
Yes.
I think that, I think everywhere, every time there's a shall, it should be changed to may. Because then that gives us the opportunity, do we want to do this, or do we not want to do it?
That's a good idea, I think.
Cause if it says shall, it means you will.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so Ron, the, the thirty days, what about if we, uh, shall be granted for a period of, of, of up to, but not to exceed three months? I think we should do, uh.
That next paragraph period, just take it out. Upon request of the employee coming by doctor's statement.
Take out that.
Have you, have you got, you, you're looking at six months up there, aren't you? In that first A?
Yeah.
Then enough?
That would take you to be planning.
I would think so.
So, take out the second paragraph under A?
Upon request of the employee coming by doctor's statement, maternity leaves without pay may be extended for increments of thirty days, not to exceed six months. So we, we know we got six months up in the above one, so what are we saying that again for? In no case shall the total period of time exceed twelve months, bruh.
And we can't put that in there by what this.
What they're saying by that is so that you got three months, then you get an additional three months, and then if you need more time than that, then you're getting thirty days at a time up for another six months to equal twelve months.
But do you, do you wanna be without an employee at all?
Well, no, but you wanna just kick an employee out just because they're having trouble with their baby.
Well, that one, that's, that's a different thing too, but.
I think, you know, it's, it could be handled a per-person basis, and I don't know if this would ever actually come into a play here, but.
Yeah.
I think if they're gone six months, you're gonna have somebody here temporarily to do their job anyway.
I agree with that.
And the temp can just stay on longer, you can still grab them.
Go to C then, Chris. You wanna change that one? Cause there's a shall there too.
No, I wanna, I wanna see what we're gonna do with A first.
That's fine.
I think if we just say such leave shall be granted for a period of, you know, it says four weeks prior to the such leave shall be granted for a period of time up to, but not exceed three months, and then from there, just say something like additional time can be requested. Why, why did it?
Mm-hmm.
Additional, additional time.
Why narrow it down to three months?
Additional time, cause you might not only need a month.
On a, on a case-by-case basis, you know?
Yep.
Okay, good idea.
And just get rid of the rest of it.
Yeah, I like that too, Rob.
Yep.
Okay, so then, yeah, Steve, I think, I think anywhere, anywhere in here, uh. I shouldn't say that, because if you look at A, the employee shall, whenever possible, submit written notification to the city at least four weeks prior to her anticipated departure.
The employee may. The employee will. The, the employee will, whenever possible, that's what it should say. The employee will, whenever possible, submit written notification to the city at least four weeks prior to her anticipated departure. That's, to me, is what it should say. I'm not a lawyer, but.
No, I'm not either.
I would think if there's a problem there, that, that the person, the gallant will submit.
Yeah, that the employee should submit written notification to the city.
Yeah, should, will.
Take out shall whenever possible.
Yeah. Should or will submit, yeah, that's, sounds good to me. Rob, Franny?
What if I do this with shall? What if I, uh, have Warren go through this after we get done? What if I do this with shall? What if I, uh, have Warren go through this after we get done? And ask him about, cause.
The wording.
Cause he's the one who has alerted me of this word shall.
Okay.
Uh, so he, I think he'd be a good one to tell us where we should and shouldn't use it.
Don't forget to ask him about C then. Cause you got a shall, maybe leaves of absence without pay.
Yeah. I think anywhere there's a word.
Shall.
Shall, I think we'll ask him about that, so.
Next one?
Okay, moving on. Uh, let's see.
Page.
Settle down, Ruben Gay. Page forty-nine. Um, kinda right there in the middle of C suspensions where it says, recommendation for such action should be made by the city administrator. Just above that, it says, this authority is to be exercised only by the city administrator. I think we need to either change that to city council or. No, I think we should, I think it should say, this authority is to be exercised only by the city council. Or remove the sentence altogether. Cause it's just. First, it says that, that the city administrator has the authority and next it says that the city administrator should make recommendations. Very contradictory to me.
Council?
I think we should just eliminate that sentence.
Very good idea. Very good idea.
Everybody else agree with that?
Mm-hmm.
Good. Oh, see pages. Page fifty-three, number eleven, says, uh, and what we're talking about here is, uh, the tenure of every employee shall be contingent, contingent upon acceptable conduct, satisfactory performance of duties and compliance with personal rules, personnel rules and regulations, such as but not limited to the following, uh, that the, that the employee uh, has been involved and at fault in an avoidable accident on the job in a city vehicle or in city poss- uh, property. Uh, the only reason I bring that up is because by definition, an accident is not avoid, uh, not avoidable. So I don't know if we just take out the word avoidable or, I mean, I just, I really don't care for that whole thing, you know? And then look at number twelve. Uh, number twelve says that this, that the employee has operated city vehicles in an unlawful or hazardous manner. That to me says more than number eleven does. If we know that an employee is operating a vehicle in a hazardous or unlawful manner, then that should be something that he should be reprimanded for, not if he was in an accident. Cause accidents are gonna happen.
I can attest to that. Correct?
Should be unreportable.
Yeah. Well, I think that they're saying that they did something kinda on purpose, you know? Which to me is, is covered by twelve anyway. I think we should just take eleven out.
Everybody else think that's right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
An avoidable accident is, is a hazardous manner.
Yeah. You gonna leave twelve in?
Yeah, take eleven out and take twelve in.
Take twelve in, okay. Alright.
Something covering, Rick just jumping into the.
Eleven will be twelve.
Tractor and running over cars and stuff.
Snowplow.
Yeah.
There's one car you can hit though.
I was just gonna say, have you ever thought about doing that?
Writing?
I, I, I did not see it. Too much though.
Way too much though. Okay, next page fifty-four, number thirty-one.
Fifty-four?
Page fifty-four, number thirty-one, uh, representing their personal opinions as those of the city or department. I don't, I don't think we can tell somebody what their personal opinion is, honestly.
No, but they, if they say, well, the city says we should do it this way, they really have, they have the courtesy to.
Is that what that means?
I think that's what that's.
Probably, I think so, yeah.
Okay. So we'll leave that one alone.
Rick has his personal opinion, while you have yours too.
Well, yeah. But, yeah.
But just don't represent it as my opinion here at the city council.
That's right.
Hmm, Rob said.
Yeah, see?
That we should have beer at city council meetings.
About sleeping on duty.
My reaction is that comes to the council meeting and asks them.
No. Uh, so page fifty-seven, under health insurance. Um, what this used to say was that we would offer up to four hundred dollars a month or, uh, whatever you needed.
That definitely is changed, yeah.
Uh, that we wouldn't pay for health insurance and obviously now that, now we do. Uh, so I changed it to read, uh, what it says here. And then I even went a little bit further and changed it, um, a little more to talk a little bit more about the employee determining whether or not they want the city to pay up to a hundred percent. Because we did give the opportunity, uh, just this last month to let Myron and, and or Daryl choose if they wanted us to pay a hundred percent of their health insurance or, uh, they wanted to have a raise, so.
Do we pay for any sponsors?
No.
No. How does that work?
Have you paid?
What's that, Rick?
A hundred percent for a raise.
Uh, well, what, what we asked them was, is do you want us to pay for your health insurance a hundred percent? Because it's gonna go up by two percent of your wage right now, or do you want a two percent increase? And what we would've done was, if they would've wanted to take the two percent increase, we would've just kept paying the six hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents that we had been paying. And then whatever, whatever the insurance went up, we would deduct that out of their check. And then, then, I mean, obviously the city still pays for it, but we deducted out of their checks, so in a roundabout way.
It's a wash.
They're paying for it.
Yeah, it's a wash. Yeah, you gotta get that, that definitely has to be changed, Chris.
Yeah.
Ain't no doubt in my mind there.
So are you guys alright with the way that reads there?
Yeah. Council? Everything okay with that? Next one, Chris?
Okay. The next one is the last page in here, which would be page sixty-one. And this is our credit card policy. Uh, I shouldn't call it our credit card policy. This is brand new policy. Um, you guys have seen this before, uh, kinda stole it from the school and changed it to say some things pertinent to the city. But the one thing, um, that I wanted to talk to you about in this was, this is something that the auditor suggested that we do is get some kind of policy. So whoever's got a credit card can't just go out and spend money and we wouldn't expect them to do that anyway. But, uh, I guess if you don't have it in writing, it doesn't mean anything. It says down there, it is responsibility of the whoever to determine whether the city credit card was appropriate for city, was used for appropriate city business. Uh, who do we put there? Do we put the city council? Who we put the mayor?
You, city clerk, exactly right. Exactly right.
If you, you, uh.
If you see a focus.
And we, we look at it and say, what the hell?
Well, it's like if I would turn in a bill for stakes for a party for somebody and you let it go through and then you guys catch it, you're gonna say, well, what the hell's going on here? You approved it. Yeah, I, I agree with Franny. You're right. City clerk.
I'd have been fine with if you got stakes for me.
Why did, why did I know that was coming?
Think we all knew that.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I've got. I don't know if you guys have anything else in there that you wanna change, but, uh, I will make those changes and then, uh, that will be our new policy. And one of the, one of the things that we're gonna do is.
Talk to Warren tonight about a bunch of the changes, so we can't vote on that tonight. We'll have to vote on that at a later time.
No, what I'd like to do is I'd like to vote on what we have changed here and I wanna talk to Warren about the word shall.
Correct.
And if he changes anything in here, then I'll bring that back to you guys. If he doesn't, we'll just leave it as we approved it on this night. Okay, is that okay with you?
I just, maybe you make one big motion and we'll change, depending on what Warren said, and we just make one big change.
And we can do that too. I don't have any, don't have any problem with that at all.
We ain't stumbling through two motions.
That's fine. Let's do it that way.
In case there's something that he thinks should be different than what we think and.
Yeah, okay.
And get it corrected and.
Then when we do, then when we do approve it, what we're gonna do is we'll have a, we'll have a meeting and we'll give this to, and I asked our insurance guy if we need to give it to our part-time pool kids and bartenders. And he said that he suggested that we do that. And then we also have a sheet and I have it with me. Uh, it's called a sign-off sheet that says that.
I have accepted or received.
Read it, received it. I understand it.
I understand all the governing rules.
Welcome to the world of paperwork.
No, that's, no, that's a good idea, so. But it's, it's a good idea, Franny. Let's just do one big ball shot. And you go talk to, to Warren on that one then.
Okay.
Uh, discuss approved borrowing money from the bank for electrical rebuild.
Yeah, and I should have a sheet in here, yeah. Uh, so I talked to both banks and we can borrow money. Um, maybe even below two and a half, uh, you know, we didn't, we don't have a, we don't have anything set in stone. So it was kind of a, you know, yeah, we can do this and we can do that, but don't hold me to it type of deal. So that's why I put two and a half to three and a half. And then what I did was I, I just, you know, checked to see what, what a payment would be and, and how much total interest we would have over the year. So you guys can see that there, two and a quarter percent, it would cost us eighteen, eighteen hundred bucks to borrow a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, it seems pretty reasonable to me to be able to do that. And I'll, uh, back up a little bit and just tell you that the reason why I brought this whole thing up is because if we spend that three hundred thousand dollars to pay off a bond, uh, then we don't have anywhere to start with, uh, with, with beginning, you know, the electric project. And, uh, scares the hell out of me to, to spend three hundred thousand dollars and not have any money.
Backup.
I shouldn't say any money, uh.
Backup.
We, we do still have money, but we, we just wouldn't have as much.
Are, are both these banks in agreement with this?
Uh.
Or is one way another higher than the other?
Yes. Yes, one, one will, one will, uh, borrow us the money for less than the other one.
Do we wanna get into which one is which or not?
No.
Okay.
We don't wanna.
Yeah, we don't wanna, no.
We don't wanna do that yet. Uh, I think, and I think one of the things that we could do, I mean, if you look at it, you're talking about eighteen hundred dollars at two and a quarter percent and twenty-eight hundred dollars at, at three and a half percent. You know, a thousand dollars, is that gonna kill us over a year? Probably not. Uh, but both of them, both of them were real close at the two point seven five. So, you know, you could, you could figure twenty-two hundred dollars as a, as a total cost for the year if you wanted to. Um, and, you know, it may be a case where we wanna just borrow the, the lowest percentage interest that we can or do half and half. I don't know. And maybe this isn't an option that you guys wanna have. I don't know.
Well, I guess when you look at, um, instead of the, of the one bank trying to give you a better deal, there's a reason they're trying to do that, cause they, they, they want.
They want the business.
You know, so if we start, again, try to split it up again, then I don't think the deal's gonna be as sweet. And I, I can understand that too.
And it, and it'll change, uh, from one year to the next.
Yeah.
You know, it won't be, it won't be two and a quarter percent next year. You know, it might be two point three or two point five or whatever it is, but. Uh, so, you know, that could be something that we look at.
Good point, Franny. Pretty good point.
And too, if, you know, this is not gonna be a one-year project anyway, so I mean.
Right.
Maybe we can jump back to a different bank every year or something like that too, or different year.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean.
Give each one a little bit of business, yeah.
Favoritism on one or the other.
Yeah, I think that's a good way to look at it, but for right now, all this is, is, uh.
FYI.
Just information. It's, you know, something.
An option.
Yeah, it's an option. I, I personally think it's a good option. I really do for a couple thousand dollars, you know, and just get.
Get the, get the project.
Gives us a little bit of a security blanket.
Well, and if we had bonded, we wouldn't, I mean, bonding would be about, be about the same anyway.
And, and we would have more costs associated with that, cause then you have to get council involved. One thing that both banks did require was a letter, uh, that says that we, that, that it would be tax exempt. Which is easy to do. All we have to do is call Warren and he can write a letter that says that it would be tax exempt. And then, then we go, then we go from the three and a half percent all the way down to less than three percent for both, both banks, so. So that's what that is.
The thing about it is, is we never get out from behind the eight ball. We're always in tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
Right. That is, that is a little bit true. Uh, if, if we pay off the, the bond uh, with the three hundred thousand dollars and borrow the money, then we would use the thirteen thousand dollars a month that we put into that account to pay off the loan that we have at the bank. But we don't have to save, um, I don't know, seven or eight thousand dollars a month to pay for the bond that we paid off. So, yeah, we could save that money up and then eventually we would be able to just use our own money, Rob. There, you know, maybe after a couple of years.
Three, four years, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that. As long as that's what we've got a plan to do, you know, cause I think that.
I think, I think we're gonna have to have some type of plan just to.
Well.
Get going.
You gotta stop and think what Chris said now. If you take that three hundred thousand, that means you don't have any, uh, what do you wanna call it? Backup money or.
Savings.
Whatever. I mean, you, you gotta stop and think about that. Do you wanna? Just, just like Chris said, it's an FYI. Something put in the back of your head to keep you thinking.
Yeah.
Any other questions on the electrical build bank?
Would they put this in the form of line of credit?
Well, that was, uh, one thing that one of the banks suggested was, you know, you, you don't wanna just come down and borrow the whole hundred and fifty thousand. You may not need it all. Uh, one bank suggested it. I didn't even talk to the other bank about it. I'm sure they would do the same thing.
I think that'd be the better way.
I think it would be too, because then you don't pay interest un- until you actually use the money, so.
I like to pay as gold.
Yeah. I like that too.
Well, before you make any decisions, just kinda put that in the back of your head, what Chris has told you. Cause there's a lot of options that you have to go, which ways we can go. Um, you know, we don't have to, we don't have to pay the whole bond off either. We can pay part of it off and save part of it for a little seed money and, and borrow part of what we need from the bank. Like Franny says, you don't need to go down and borrow the whole damn hundred and fifty if we only need a hundred, right, Franny? So just, just a few things for you to keep in the back of your head. And we can make a decision on that probably in a month, Chris. I don't think we wanna jump into it next meeting, but I think in a month, we should be able to make a decision.
Yeah.
Okay.
What, just a question there. I mean, like if you buy, uh, find a truck, uh, we have, do we have money to pay that now?
Yeah. Well, how much money?
Well, I don't know. I mean, twenty, twenty-five, thirty thousand.
Yeah, we could, we could spend that much.
Up to forty, I think. Thirty-five?
I don't know, I mean, we've got three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in savings now, so. Spend that however we want to right now.
Well, just a question. I mean, uh, that we wouldn't have to go borrow right away or something.
Yeah, no, we could, we could do that if we found a good deal there that we wanted to go get right away, Ron, we could do that, yeah.
Yeah, we could even call it. We took it out of the wind generator savings.
Yeah, that's just what I was gonna.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Cause we do have a hundred, we do have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there that's basically just sitting there right now, so.
That's all part of the electrical too.
True.
Right. Okay, you want Chris or do you want Rick? Left station repair.
Well, a little bit of both. Uh, but let me start by saying, uh, you guys saw the bid on page sixty-three. Saw that at the last meeting, thirty-five thousand dollars. Uh, that's for a company to come in and replace two pumps. Um, and pretty much have a new system, the way we've got it now down there. Uh, so we went and got two more bids and, uh, the one that's, the other one that's in here. is for twenty-nine thousand dollars, but I wanna point something out there, if you look at the two bids together, uh, the twenty-nine thousand dollar bid does not have new valves in it. Uh, the thirty-five thousand dollar bid does, and they're pretty close to five thousand dollars, so the bids are almost exactly equal. Uh, another thing I wanna point out about the twenty-nine thousand dollar bid is that guy did not come down and look at, physically look at-
What we have.
What we have, uh, where the other guy did, so he probably knows a little bit more, uh, about that. Uh, the third bid that we got is from a company called Iowa Pump Works, and that's for fifty thousand dollars basically. And that's to do the same thing as, uh, Electric Pump will do, come in and, and they did come up and look at it, so they understand kinda what we're looking at, uh, but that's, you know, fifteen thousand dollars more than, than the other bid. Um-
Now, will you oversee that then, Rick? For the installation, I mean, to make sure everything's done correctly and-
We're gonna go a step further into this before we're done, Ron.
Yeah. So let, let me explain this a little bit more about what, what Rick's talking about. Uh, when the Iowa pump guy was up here, he said you, you need to, well, actually, not even him, everybody has pretty much said, you know, you guys can put these pumps in, but all you're really doing is putting a Band-Aid on something that you're gonna have to fix later, you're putting a Band-Aid on something that needs stitches. And so what they suggested we do is, is we just take everything out of there and put a whole new system in, and I mean, we can't afford that, it's gonna cost us two hundred thousand dollars. So, what we did was, this, this guy that came up here said, you need to talk to this guy, because this guy can get you a grant paper, eighty percent of the project. So we started that today, we started that process today to figure out how much it would cost to take what we have in the ground, out of there, put something brand new in, uh, and, you know, see what that'll cost, first of all. Second of all, see if we can get the grant, now, the grant's due on February second. So that's three weeks from today, it's a pretty fast turnaround, but we've got a company out in New York that says that they can do it. So, we're looking into that right now. Uh, my feeling on that is, is I would much rather spend forty thousand dollars on something that's done right and we don't have to touch it again for ten years or fifteen years or twenty years, than I would spend forty thousand dollars on something that's a Band-Aid and we may have to do something again in five years.
Or three.
Well, when you look at our-
Or three.
At our system, you know, we've done a lot of work on this side of it, but we haven't done anything-
Down there.
You know.
Right.
And we've, we've managed to get by, but it's, that's all right, I mean, it's, if anybody decides to go down, it's-
Look how many times we Band-Aided it, Franny.
But, so here, here's what we kinda would like to do, and, uh, I don't wanna talk everything, I mean, every, every, all of this information that I got is, is from Rick, and so what we would like to do is we would like to at least tonight approve one pump. One pump down there is working right now okay, it's not the greatest thing in the world, but it's working okay. So, uh, and the other pump that's down there isn't, isn't really working at all. The other day we went down there and we thought it may still working, but it didn't, did it, Rick? No, it didn't even start, so, so we're basically down to one pump right now, so we'd like to approve one pump tonight for sure. And then give us a little bit more time to work on this, uh, this other option that we, that we think may work, we're hoping will work.
Rick, anything to add?
Inevitably, this pump that we're talking about probably will once, if we go all the way through with this, it won't be any good for us after that point. But it's something that's gonna have to be done just to get us by.
So, so what that means is, we're gonna buy this pump tonight, or, I shouldn't say that. We're asking you guys to approve us buying a pump tonight to get us through until we put in whatever we'd like to put in, and then that pump that we bought tonight, we're just gonna scrap it. But, we can't, we can't do nothing and then have the pump go down, 'cause then, then we will have to, I mean, then we'll have to make an emergency decision and we'll have to get something done right away.
So one pump is thirty-five thousand?
No.
No.
That's two.
So you're looking at seventeen thousand for one pump?
Roughly, probably split that.
You gotta, you gotta remember, there's panels, there's fuse panels and everything, and so there's, I don't know, what, maybe ten? Would I be wrong there, Rick? For the, for the pump? Would it even be that?
No, the pump, the pumps themselves, Franny, are, uh, are six thousand.
Okay.
Uh, there's some valves in there that-
Yeah, that's what I seen there, I was like-
Yeah.
Let me bring up about the valves, the valves ain't necessarily gonna be, have to be put in, um, in this situation, 'cause if we're not gonna do it, there's no need to put new valves in, if we can get them to work, see, to get us by.
Okay.
The other one was kinda to rebuild them station that's in there, which I don't know if that's really that good of an idea.
So you're not talking like seventeen thousand dollars, you're talking, this could, this whole project could be only sixty-eight thousand dollars.
Well, here's, here's the, here's the bid right here, a pump is sixty-four hundred, uh, an adapter is twelve hundred, and then an appeller is eleven hundred, so you're talking, you know, about nine-
Three plus sixty-four would be eighty-seven hundred.
Yeah, about nine thousand dollars there.
Just put ten on it.
Uh, yeah, so ten, ten thousand dollars roughly. Uh, and then that's for the pump, and then for them to come and put it in, you know, that's gonna cost, I don't know what that, I mean, that, that may cost a couple thousand dollars.
Know where we can use that pump if we get the other one project going through?
Don't know where we would, but you never know. I don't know. No.
Okay. I just wanna know if there's any type of a backup where we could use this pump for anything.
So explain to me what the difference of if we were to go with the thirty-five thousand dollar expenditure, I know that's not what we're gonna do, but go with the thirty-five thousand dollar expenditure and we call that a Band-Aid versus the other thing? What all is that gonna entail that this doesn't?
The, the other ones will entail actually putting one canister in the ground. And hooking it up, the reason why I say that is, this one here, you don't know how, how thick the walls are on the can that's in there now. You're running out of cookies. And I think you ran that, weren't we? The metal guts were out of there, a hole coming to the side of it, and then rocks were coming in and just eating the pumps out of the station. So that's why we did that one out there. Now the one out of cookies, a little bit different situation than this one, 'cause that only does two customers. This one does a whole round.
Yeah. That's what it's just, the hole and chasing and everything.
Yeah, and the newer ones, you don't have to have to find space, you don't have to go down in them at all, or you shouldn't have to.
Yeah.
Let's put it that way, 'cause everything comes out of the top. They have rails and the pumps drop in, kinda like the one that by Russ, Russ Kroger's, the one out of cookies. You, you hook up into a chain, you pull the whole pump out. The only time you'd ever have to go in there is to fix a pipe in the bottom of it or something.
And so this canister versus just putting in the pumps and that, this project's gonna cost I know that you're gonna try to get a grant for it and all that, but-
Right, and we don't know that, I called, I called two engineers today to have them come up and look at it and give us some kinda, uh, estimate on what that will cost. Um, we can get up to fifty thousand dollars in the grant, so I kinda thought, you know, if we're gonna spend thirty-six thousand dollars on a Band-Aid, if we, if we can keep it around eighty thousand dollars, fifty thousand from the grant, thirty thousand of our own money, kind of a wash, but we have a new system and we don't have to, we don't have to worry about-
It'd be nice, you know. If we could take this-
We can get our generator put down there.
Money to build to, that we propose here.
We've got that.
I know.
All in one within the next six months. I don't know how long this is gonna be.
Put in you do.
Yes.
Installed.
I just don't understand, that's why I'm asking you what we're, what we're dealing here.
Yeah, it's worth some time, if you've got some time, just have Rick take you down there and just show you the hole. You'll, you'll kinda understand it once you look at it.
What helped me a lot today, Rick, and, and helped me out again with this, we've got a line, we've got a line that comes down here, right? When, when you drew this drawing for me today, that helped me out a ton.
Yeah.
So we've got a line that comes down from town like this, right?
Correct.
And then we've got a line that comes from roughly, uh, well, like east parts, this way, and that dumps into a tank.
Manhole, yeah.
What'd you call it? Yeah, a manhole, and then a pipe goes out of that manhole into, uh, one of our other tanks, right?
Correct.
And then is there another tank after that?
Yeah, then there's a dry well.
So this is our, this is our dry well, and this is the one that we're talking about right now, Ron. Okay, so this has got two pumps in it, and that pumps the, pumps the sewage this way and into our lagoon. And so what we would like to do is eliminate all of this stuff here and put, put our new tank here, run the sewage out of here and then pump it to here, and then you don't have either one of these. And the reason why you don't wanna have a tank in the ground, because you can't go down in there to work on anything unless you have oxygen, all that kinda stuff.
Confined space.
So, yeah, confined space, so.
We've been doing it, it's not, you shouldn't be.
No, you shouldn't do it and-
They're real sticklers on it anymore.
'Cause you can go down at any time.
The one in the middle he's showing you is the wet well, and that's where all the sewage from town goes into. In the bottom that, there's two pipes, it's shaped like this in the bottom, and there's two pipe go out into them, two pumps.
Come out here?
Yeah, there's two pipes go in there and there's a pump on each side, and that thing's twelve foot in the ground, the dry well is. And then that, they call it a dry well, but it's never been dry since they built the damn thing. 'Cause it just leaks. 'Cause they were not sealed pumps to begin with, they're, they're wet pumps. So actually, there's three pumps, and there's another one in the bottom of them, which I think you got a bill on last month that burned up from trying to keep up with all that stuff. But this pump was great. But what them don't leak past, go into the other one and they pump it back into that wet well. Basically, it's pumping sewage back into there so you can pump it out again, you know, just to keep the seal part under. It's not very good environment.
That, does that explain it a little bit better, Ron?
Yeah.
Still kinda-
Oh, yes.
'Cause when I first, when I first thought about it too, I just, I couldn't, I couldn't get it, I couldn't understand it, and I didn't know what, what it was doing, but now I understand it a little bit better and-
This thing's been hunting us for a lot of years, hasn't it, Francis?
Oh, yeah.
Francis has been down there during storms with the pump, pumping it before. I know, and it, uh-
Council?
I'm in whatever, you know, Rick thinks it needs to take to, you know, obviously, it's, if we go down completely, we're 'cause this thing isn't gonna happen overnight anyway, it's gonna be a six-month process, probably to get this whole thing put together.
Well, I think it takes, you know, a couple of months to get the pumps.
Yeah.
Uh, now-
Well, from electric pump, it wasn't, they were, it's a ten-day, but the other company was four, fourteen, twelve to fourteen day, weeks.
Months.
Weeks.
Weeks, not months. Weeks.
Sorry.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
When, when you're talking that, it seems like months.
Yeah.
But, uh-
It can turn into that, but yeah, you're right, I, and, and that's the reason why we, we would like to get one pump approved tonight, because then, then we can at least get that other pump in there, and if, if the one that's in there now goes down, we'll have one good one.
Yeah.
And we'll be able to, uh, rely on that for now.
Keep going.
Right, it's gonna buy us some time basically, is what it's gonna do.
Motion?
And we, we also wanna get that from Electric Pump.
Yeah.
I don't know if I said that or not, but-
That kinda figured out probably was gonna be from us, we were dealing with them, so.
Yeah.
And they've been pretty good to us, so.
Well, I don't need, buy a copper cover to replace one pump and whatever goes with it from Electric Pump.
Second?
Not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made, and seconded? Does everybody stand, understand the motion?
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Another motion?
I was a hundred percent sure that was gonna be a roll call.
No.
I was wrong.
What are you thinking?
Thank you, Franny.
Northwest Iowa League is in, uh, Carroll next, no, it's this Thursday, isn't it?
Yep, this coming Thursday.
At the winery.
One for me.
Have you ever eaten there?
Yes. Very good food.
Yep.
Just when you, when you're speaking with meatballs, you're gonna pay extra for meatballs. Oh, yeah, ask Joe Hinkelman, brother-in-law works there, he's a cook there.
There were four of them today, down the other night, everybody hated me.
Really?
Really.
Huh.
I haven't eaten at Roy's. It was all, it was, uh, Italian food back then, so I didn't know.
The ring neck, wine's pretty good. We call it red, if I remember right, but-
Did you get enough response, you know, we're showing, is that?
I know.
You're not gonna run?
No.
You're not gonna go run?
No.
I'll need to check, can I get one tomorrow, 'cause I'll be gone.
No.
I gotta go to a meeting in Fremont Wednesday and Thursday, when I come home from Fremont, I'm gonna go right to the meeting.
Okay.
I need to check tomorrow.
Yeah.
Did you say please?
Please.
I was gonna tell him to call in, 'cause I'll forget about it by tomorrow.
I can do that. Anything else? Anything, uh, anybody need to bring up?
We got a court date on one of our houses. It's, uh, March twenty-third. So, we'll see what happens after that, but-
March twenty-third, you said?